I'm Ramondo Cuellar Jr., President of the Westa Cueres Board of Trustees. This public hearing is being conducted pursuant to Governor Greg Abbott's suspension of certain open meeting law requirements to the extent necessary to allow for telephonic and video conference meetings in response to COVID-19. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time now is 5:32, and I call this public hearing to order. I'll now roll call. When I call your name, signify your presence by saying here or present. Mr. Isidoro Nieto?
Present.
Jackie Suscita? Coach Jesse Trevino?
Present.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez? Mr. Marte de los Santos? Mr. Andrew Gonzalez?
Present.
And myself, Ramondo Cuellar, that the record show that a quorum of board members are in attendance. Item three, public hearing on proposed 2021-2022 budget and tax rate. Dr. Valdez.
Good evening, Mr. President and Board of Trustees and members of the audience. This evening, we bring before you the public hearing on proposed 2021-2022 budget and tax rate. Our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance will lead this evening's presentation. Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening.
Excuse me just a minute, Mr. Sanchez.
Sure.
Let the record reflect that Mr. de los Santos, Mr. Marte de los Santos, has joined the meeting at 5:33. You now have the floor. Thank you.
This is the public hearing on the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 to discuss the budget and tax rate for the board to consider approval at the meeting coming up on Wednesday, August 25th. This public hearing is a required meeting by the legislature, by the state. It was duly advertised in the monitor on Friday, August 13th. And the 21-22 budget will be a 10-month fiscal year. The board approved to switch our fiscal year from the cycle of September 1 through August 31 to July 1 through June 30. And the 21-22 year will be the transition year to do that switch. After the end of next year, we will begin the fiscal year on July 1, 2022. Okay. And some of the information that I will be presenting. Take Carlos. Oh. You can control it. You can control it. Yeah. You can control it. Yeah. Okay. Let me do it then. I can do it from here? Can we have an extra minute here? Right here, right? No, I have it. This one. Okay. Can you see the slides? Okay. Some of the information that I'm going to present, or most of it, you have already seen it throughout the three budget workshops and one board meeting where we made a presentation of the budgets that we discussed. And the first item, besides what I already said, is that the budget is based on certified property values approved by the Hidalgo County Preso District, and the values were issued July 22 of this year. And the total was $2,873,972,000. That amount is 258 million higher than last year. That equals to 9.89%. That was a big increase on the property values, and that is something that's affecting the whole community, the whole valley, not just Westaco. But I wanted to bring that up. After the values, we yield the... Do I need... Do I wait, Mr. Cuellar? Do I continue? Mr. Cuellar, do you want me to continue? Do I wait or continue? I know you're looking. Let me turn.
As long as we have a call and press.
Okay, okay. Then I'll continue. After the property values, we work with the template provided by the state and calculate the tax rate, the proposed tax rate. Our MNO tax rate, as comprised and dictated by the legislature, is 94 cents, .9407, for the maintenance and operations, also known as MNO rate. And the INS rate, we're proposing four pennies, or 0.04, for a total rate of .9807. The prior year's rates are in the third column there, 2020-2021. The MNO rate was .9989, and the INS was two pennies. The total rate was $1.0189. The proposed rate is .9807, so that is 3.8 pennies less than last year in total. This slide shows a brief summary of the debt service fund. This is the fund that is used to pay for the bonds that the district issued in the past, bonds that were approved by the taxpayers of Westaco ISD. And this is where we yield the INS tax rate for the payment of these bonds. The column on the right shows that as of right now, first row, we estimate $528,000 as a fund balance in this fund at the end of the year, besides an additional $2 million that we will ask the board to approve on August 25th as a transfer for the surplus funds of the Locomaneus Fund to the debt service to pay bonds. The total balance we will have at the end of the year will be 2.5 million. And then with the four pennies of INS tax rate if approved, we will generate $1,035,000 of INS taxes, approximately $925,000 in IFA funding. This is instructional facilities allotment funds approved by the legislature, and these are funds generated by the INS tax rate, plus $2,000 of administrative fees to the bank that manages our bond payments. The total amount available for payment of debt will be 4.4 million for next year. The bond that we have to pay is $3,143,425. This will leave us at the end of next year, $1,347,000. As I mentioned last time, the amount of the payment is 3.1 million only because by switching the fiscal year to 10 months, the August payment will not be paid in the next fiscal year, but until the following 22, 23 years. That amount that is paid in August is approximately $800,000, so the amount needed for next year is shorter. So with the two pennies of INS rate and the $2 million transferred from the Locomaneus Fund, we expect to have $1,347,000 left in the fund balance of next year. That way, at the end of next year, when we're working on the budget for the following year, we will not ask you to transfer $2 million, but hopefully just $1 million instead of $2. The increase on the two pennies will help us with that, so that we don't have to transfer so much money from the Locomaneus Fund to the INS Fund or the debt service fund. Any questions there or comments? Okay. Our employee insurance benefits, I had mentioned before that we will deny anticipated increases to the budget or to the employees' pocket to pay for this, so there will be no increases on the employee contributions to the medical or dental plans or to the district. And we will continue providing the life insurance benefit of $25,000 per employee to all the employees and not just to the employees. The current budget that is being proposed does not include funds for transfer to the construction fund for facilities. Even though we have facility needs, we have not included any funds in the budget. The one big item that we have been discussing throughout the budget workshops is the need for fixing roofs in the district. The total amount needed, as we estimated the last time, was about $26.5 million for fixing the roofs, all the roofs that we have. Since we don't have money in the budget for that, other than transferring money from the fund balance, the next alternative would be to do a maintenance tax note. We had bond counsel and the financial advisor discussed it with the board to provide information, and we hope that in the near future, the board will consider approving a maintenance tax note that will help us provide roofing for our schools, if not all of them, hopefully for some, so that we can address the roofs and have better quality of air besides a air cleaning unit that we've been buying in our schools, having a better envelope, building envelope by having better roofs. Besides that, we have HVC projects that we need, and so this time, we have included those funds, those requests for funds, in our S2 and S3 grant applications to the state so that we can hopefully fund those from there in the future as well. The next three pages include the roofing project that we have discussed, and this includes all the schools and departments, all elementarys, middle schools, high schools, for the whole campus or part of it, and we also have some departments included. The total amount, the construction cost alone is slightly over $25 million. We have budgeted an estimated 6% architect fee for that. Being conservative, we hope to negotiate it to get it to less, but in case we cannot bring the architect price down on the architects for this project, we estimate $26.5 million will be enough for the roofing projects. And again, they are not included in the budget.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Is this in priority level, is just these just listed as the funds that we need? Do you have a priority list yet?
Yes, the projects are listed in priority order.
Okay.
If I go to the first two here, two elementary schools are the first ones.
Okay.
There are more need, there need to be done first.
Thank you. What about, I have a question, sir.
Yes.
You have more detail on item number 22? It says here departments, and it has a question mark, and it asks $2 million to set aside for that.
Yes, there's a couple of departments and companies that we haven't finished the measurements. We estimated that $2 million will be enough, it might be less, but before we get to approving a maintenance tax note, if the board is so inclined, we'll provide more details on it. We didn't have all the details on it, that's why we put approximately a amount of $2 million. This is a list of maintenance tax notes that we have, the district has listed in the past. We've done, the current ones that we still have open that we're paying are from 2014, '17, '18, and '19 for the projects that we have here, for HVC projects district-wide, for construction renovation, buses, more HVC that we did in 2017, to buy new buses in 2018 after the flood, and to refinance the loan that we had, the lease that we had on the new scoreboard at the stadium. And the next slide shows six maintenance tax notes that we did in 2001 to 2009 for different items, and they have all been paid. The next slide shows the tax rates being considered approved by all the school districts. We discussed Westaco already in the second column there. We had the tax rate for La Jolla, Macallan, Hallenchin, Mission, POGA, Mercedes, and Donna. As you can see, the rate for Westaco, the lowest rate, and we have been the lowest rate for a long time. The next slide showed the proposed, no, the pay raises that we have had for the last five fiscal years, from 2016, '17 to 2020, '21, where we had professional staff, or teachers, at $1,000 for '16, '17, and '17, '18, $1,200, $700 the next year, and then on 1920, when Haltbo3 came into the picture, we had better pay raises for everybody, teaching guards from $3,400 to $4,000. The current year, 2021, we did not have pay raises. Professionals had 2% from the midpoint for the year '16, '17, and '17, '18, $700 like everybody else in 18, '19, 5% from midpoint on 1920, and no pay raises on the last year. And the paraprofessional staff, instructional assistants, manual trades, technical trades, bus drivers, they got 4% in '16, '17, 5% in '17, '18, $700 only in 18, '19, 7% in 1920, and no pay raises in 2021. I had discussed that before, but just for the audience, this is the public hearing just so that they are aware. This slide is the one of the pay raises that we presented to the board and with the board approved, pending approval of the compensation plan, which is noted at the bottom. The compensation for teachers, the pay raise would be teachers, nurses, and librarians on a 187-day contract, $2,000. Professional staff, principals, administrators, and other administrators, 2.74% from midpoint. Paraprofessional staff, office and teaching assistants, 3.74% from midpoint. And manual trades, technical trades, which are custodial, energy management, food service, maintenance, security, transportation, 3.74% from midpoint.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
Just for confirmation, just for those people that are watching, especially our employees.
Yes, sir.
The $3,000 SIR stipend that they'll be receiving is separate from this. This is an actual pay raise to their pay scale.
Yes, sir.
Just for confirmation so they understand, because I know there's misinformation out there saying that they're not going to get their $3,000 stipend, but I just want them to know that this is separate from what we're looking at now.
No, they will get the $3,000, yes. And there's an item on agenda for Wednesday for the board to approve when to pay it.
Right.
And any restrictions on it or for qualifications to when employees have to be here by?
Right.
And we'll discuss it at that time. There will be $3,000, the board approved it already.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Before we move.
Yes, sir.
Forward, can we go one slide back?
This one?
Yes. Can, for our sake, can you make, can you put like 2016, 2017, can we go ahead and put stipend or raise? Because right here, we're presenting it as if it was a true, straight-up raise. Was it a raise or was it a stipend?
No, the '16, '17, no, it's not a stipend, it was a pay raise.
Okay, what about, what about the next year?
Also, the 2021 is the one that was a stipend, but not a pay raise. We say no pay raises, but the board approved two $1,000 at one-time incentive payments.
Okay.
Yes, well, that's correct. Thank you for the clarification. It was a total of $2,000 that everybody got. Everybody the same. $1,000 in December and $1,000 in June.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this is the slide that compares the pay raises approved by Westaco and the ones approved or almost approved by all the school districts. Teachers, it says 3%, but it's actually 3.2%, which is $2,000. Our amount is higher than Macallan, $2,000, than Hallenchin on the teachers, La Jolla also is not as high as San Benito, but it's higher than Sherland and higher than Mission.
Would you say it's actually, it's not 3%, it's actually 2.?
It's $2,000, it's about 3.1 and change.
3.1?
3.1, yes.
Okay, okay.
So the pay raise for teachers is higher than everybody that I have listed here except San Benito. San Benito is about $2,300 or something like that, when you calculate it.
We already paid well above what they pay.
Yes, sir. Our pay tables are a lot higher than anybody else on most of the levels. Professional staff approve at 2.74%. Other districts at 2.5, three of them, La Jolla, Hallenchin, Macallan, 2.5 only. San Benito's higher, like I said, 3.5, Sherland 2%, and Mission is 2.5. So paraprofessionals, we have 3.74, and on that one, we're higher than everybody. We have 2.5, 3, 2.5, 3.5, 2, and 3. So Westaco's higher, and the same for manual and technical trade staff. And here's the information on the SIR fund, the SIR3 fund. The board approved 3,000. We haven't decided the payment yet. And Macallan approved 3,000, and they're getting paid in December. Hallenchin, 2,500 to be paid in December. La Jolla, 2,500. San Benito, 500 to 1,000, it varies based on the number of years staff have been in the district. Mission is $1,000 in August and $1,000 in December. The others are the same as Macallan.
On this $3,000 retention stipend.
Yes, sir.
I know, are we going to discuss it a little bit more on Friday?
Yes.
I mean, on the 23rd, on Wednesday?
Yes, there's an agenda for that.
And then we'll talk about the dispersment day and so forth?
Say that again?
The dispersment day?
Yes, yes, that's exactly what it's about. The month.
We did have a survey, correct?
Yes, sir, it is included.
Everybody opted for one, for one large payment?
Yes, and we revised the agenda item after we sent that one, we made some revisions. We should have had another option, like you just mentioned. And we have additional information for, up for the board on the approval.
Okay.
And we will be mailing that one to you later, tomorrow morning.
51% of the staff that responded, responded in favor of the one time in September.
September.
Correct.
Would it be, just for clarification, I guess, I know we're poking at this.
Yes, sir.
Would it be paid if it does go through for September? Will it be part of their paycheck for September?
No, it will be towards the end of the month, because September is going to be very busy getting the pay raises into the check for the employees, so we want to do a separate payroll.
So it'll be a separate check?
Around the 27, 28 of the month. Usually the stipend we didn't, incentive payment, we didn't at the end of the month as well.
Okay.
That we have it as a separate payment.
So it'll be towards the end of the September?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that way at least.
Yes.
Our staff have an idea. Dr. Rodriguez?
Sure. Let the record reflect that Dr. Rodriguez has joined the meeting at 5:53. Mr. Sanchez?
Yes? Oh, okay. I don't have a question.
Thank you.
The budget includes, the vacancies listed on this page, which we had discussed with the board, the new teachers or staff to replace existing, or teachers or staff that retire or resigned at the end of last year are reflected in the budget already, even though we haven't hired everybody to replace the staff that resigned or retired, the allocation is included in the budget. We also have seven teachers for gifted and talented program included, two teachers for dyslexia, an extra orchestra teacher for Westaco High School, second director for human resources, a receptionist for the business office, a secretary for the construction department, 19 substitute custodians, which will be funded through the S2 funds, and a security guard for the safety and security office. All of them, but the custodian will be funded through local funds or the state funds that they go with.
Andres, you don't have transportation?
La cuatro.
From adding more bus drivers?
No, no, I don't have it. I don't have it, but if anybody who left during the year that we had already in the budget, they're included already. Anybody that was not there, then we'll have two items.
Can you get ahold of Mr. Garcia and discuss, because I know our buses ran super late today because we're short drivers.
Yes.
So if you can please reach out, Dr. Valdez, please.
Yes, we are, we're looking into, which is a common shortage, right, throughout the region and state and nationally.
All districts.
So it does, it, they'll have to double up on routes, and that causes delays, right? So I think we're like most school districts in the area that are seeking, I mean, just seeking bus drivers and had that job fair on Saturday, but we're still, and Mr. de los Santos has more information regarding?
20 or 13, or? Yes, Mr. Gonzalez, we're approximately 15 drivers short, so they're not new positions, they're already included in this budget.
Okay.
So we're hiring as quick as they can, and just to address that, traffic was really bad.
Yeah.
Everywhere this morning.
Thank you.
Mr. de los Santos, where were we? Well, and last year's a hard, hard year to compare it to, but were we, have we always been, I mean, we've always been short bus drivers, but never this large.
Never in this situation that we're in, Coach Trevino, we had about 20 to 25 drivers approximately that retired or resigned during last school year. One of the reasons was they just didn't want to deal with COVID, and then the other reason was since we were shut down for lockdown, there was no classes, so we're only paying them, say, their six hours per day, when normally they're used to making, you know, 40, 50, 60 hours a week based on all the extracurricular activities, the trips, the football games. So they took a big cut in their pay. So that was another reason that we lost a lot of them, but again, we're, we're working very hard. We're not the only district that's dealing with this. All the other districts are short of bus drivers. So these positions, you know, we, about 20, 25, we managed to fill about five, so I remember about 15 short.
And we have a large amount of kids riding the bus, because I know the pickup lines and the drop-off lines were fairly long also.
Yes, yes. I don't, I don't have a number, but I can get that to you in the update, as far as riders for this week.
Just rider for this week, that way. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there, Dr. Valdez, is there anything else that we can do to, you know, I know some districts out there are offering bonuses and so forth?
Yeah, we need to closely examine the pay. I know some do give sign-on bonuses, and they've increased the pay to attract and recruit, right? So that's something that we need to, to look into. But I know even pre-pandemic, there's been a shortage of bus drivers, and of course, you know, the certifications they need and in a health certification by a Department of Transportation, a DOT medical provider as well. So we felt, we have felt that, that kind of a drought of not having qualified bus drivers nationally, and like I said, in the state and the region.
Yes.
But it is a fantastic idea to provide a sign-on bonus and evaluate where are we as compared to, to other districts. So we'll, we'll look into that and then provide you an update.
Thank you.
That's a great point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez?
Yes. The proposed 2021-22 budget includes the following: vacancies, the vacancy listed above, requested calendar adjustments on some staff schedules work, recommended reclassifications of some positions, and also the recommended stipend increases that were discussed with the board before. And you'll get more details on Wednesday for the discussion of the compensation plan. And these are all reflected in the budget as well. The page here, I don't know if you can see it, it's hard to see there, but on the booklet that I gave you, on page, page one, there's a very page that you can see.
Andres, we need to find a way.
Yes, sir.
To enlarge this somehow?
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's, it's taken directly off a copy from.
On this one, you can see it a little bit better.
A little bit better on the book?
Yes, sir. On the book, yeah, because the other one's kind of small, but if you could turn to the book, it's, it's the same.
I'm going to show you something.
On page one?
On page one, yes, sir.
It was hard to get it to fit there.
Do you see it?
Yes, it looks better, thank you. Adrian?
Can I just enlarge it? Show the screen. Oh, looking, couldn't find it. Okay. See, Mr. Trevino, now you can see the page there. Bring your size.
Better?
Yes.
That's better.
Oh, yeah, good, okay, thank you.
Right there.
Well, this is the summary of the, the budget summary page. On Wednesday, the agenda item, we will ask the board to approve the budget for the district. And the two funds that need to be approved are the general fund, which is column 10, and the debt service fund, which is column 50. The funds on 2030, the special revenue fund, in 40, and the 2030 means the beginning of the fund number, like the 31 regular 211. And, uh, the two funds that need to be approved are the general fund, which is column ten, and the debt service fund, which is column fifty. The funds on twenty-thirty, the special revenue fund and forty. And the twenty-thirty means the beginning of the fund number. Like the thirty-one, regular two eleven is included in the twenty. And the twenty-thirty, the forty, and the sixty, those are funds that are presented for information purposes only, but are listed. But the one that need to be approved are the general fund and the debt service fund. The, the revenues are shown there are one hundred in general fund, one hundred and seventy-seven million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The expenditures. See, well, you see the breakdown? The local revenue is twenty-six million, three hundred thousand. State revenue is a hundred and thirty-six million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And the federal revenue, fourteen million, four, four hundred and eleven thousand, for the total that I mentioned, one seventy-seven, one nineteen. The expenditures are one hundred and seventy-two million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-one. These are all the functions from eleven through ninety-nine. And this includes the, all the expenditures from the food service fund, which is fund one oh one, through the state, state allotment funds, the athletics, the local maintenance fund. Uh, they're all, they're all included in here. The, you can see towards the bottom, right at the bottom of the screen, on that column, shows four million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. That is the, uh, budget surplus for this fund. For once and never, we have a more money budgeted in revenue than expenditures. And the reason we have that is because of the conversion of the fiscal year. We go into ten months. Since all the revenue is earned by the ADA of the students attending school through May, we have all that money earned. The taxes, most of the taxes are collected through June. July and August are small amounts. So most of the revenue is there, but the expenditures for the, the staff that work two hundred and thirty days and two hundred and sixty days, like administration, transport, uh, maintenance, energy management, the work, those departments that work all year. The expenditures for July and August get charged to the next year. So those expenditures, we don't spend them, so we have an amount that we'll save. And this amount is intended to be a one-time infusion of capital to the fund balance. That is the reason of, the reason that a lot of, or most of the district do the change in, in fiscal year. But I wanted to mention that that is what the surplus there because of the change in fiscal year. The, I'm gonna go to the column on the fifties, the debt service fund. That shows, and the revenues, as I mentioned earlier, for local revenues, one million, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. That is, uh, taxes. And the state revenues, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. That is the, uh, instruction of facilities allotment, or also known as IFA state funds. That is a total of one million, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars of revenue. The expenditures on, on column, uh, function seventy-one shows three million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five. That reflects the February two thousand twenty-two payment on bonds, cap, uh, principal and interest, and, uh, the small fees paid to the bank that I mentioned earlier for the payment of the bonds. Uh, if this was a twelve-month year, it would be a more than three point nine million dollars in payments. That is, this is the, the budget. Any questions on this? It's just a summary. You also have the whole book that has more details.
One, one thing I would like to see here.
Yes, sir.
Is, is a, I don't know what you wanna call it, a, a, a maintenance fund? Some type of prevention maintenance fund or something? Because, you know, I, I, I'm just, I'm not fond of, of this ma- uh, maintenance tax note that we're looking at.
Okay.
To, uh, to fix all these.
The roofs?
Roofs that should have been fixed throughout all these years. So I, I'm just, I, I, I think it's, you know, we're throwing around these big old numbers when I'm looking at these roofs. Then when we start talking about, you know, I had previously asked about architecture fees and then about engineering, or just architect fees in general.
Yes.
Uh, that's a substantial amount. And, and I, I would really like for us to look at, you know, I, most of these schools, and I, and I said it last time, most of these schools are, have pa- uh, sections. So why are we looking to replace a whole school dis- a whole school facility? You know, let's say that, well, any, any, Memorial, and I know Memorial's just got, uh, replaced, I believe, right? Their roofs?
Yes.
Why are we looking at the entire campus instead of just addressing that, the, the main area? Or the third way wing, or the fourth grade wing, or, or by sec-? Why not look at this by sections? You know, I, I, I know we brought up the other day about the, another maintenance, another loan. And taking out another loan would put us like at eighty million dollars. Uh, I just, I, I think it's careless on our standpoint. And then looking, and the only reason I, I bring it up, because I look at the expenditures, and we don't have anything projected for the future, or, you know, hey, let's put something on reserve so we can address HVAC systems, or so we can address things. We're not putting anything aside. We don't, we don't have any, any categories here showing that we're actually being proactive and putting monies aside for this. And then we're waiting for a big tax loan or a big no, uh, loan to get us out of, out of problems. And, and I just, I don't, I don't, I don't foresee us surviving spending. Especially we're able to have this kind of a fund balance at the end. Why not designate certain amount of funds for, for that?
Yes, that is something that we want to do, Mr. Trevino. The main concern we wanted to address first was to raise the fund balance. Because we're supposed to maintain at least seventy-five days of fund balance.
Yes.
And we don't have it. We're working on it. We're getting there, but we don't have it yet. The, the switch in fiscal year is gonna provide some extra money. At the end of this year, we have a projected surplus as well, around four million that we have. So that's gonna help us to get there. Once we get to that level, then we can start setting everything as extra as an amount for the facilities for the future.
And, and the only reason I'm asking is, for instance, this, this new projected, uh, loan that we're looking at, how much of a payment would we be looking next year at this point? Let's say we did get this loan. What would the payment, projected payment be for that loan alone?
I, I don't have the information here because, uh, I, I didn't bring the presentation on that. Uh, the way they did it, uh, they made a small amount. You can always arrange your plan, a twenty-year loan. Uh, what they do is they look at the existing loans we have. And as we start paying loans off, or the payments, payment amount gets smaller, they project a new payment to go higher there. Because we can pay more, so if we're paying less on the old loan, we can pay more on this one. If you were to go, if we issue, let's say, twenty-six million. Uh, if we just say no interest over twenty years, we need to pay one point three million per year over twenty years. So you add interest, a million, three fifty, well, something else, something like that. So just a, we were to do it like that. But the way they do it, it could be a million, and in some years could be more, one point six, one point seven. As we pay off the older loans, we increase the payment. And when, when we have a lot more payment, they make it smaller. When they were looking at this one, when they were discussing it with the board, I believe it was a payment of about a million dollars only, or less, at the beginning. And then increase it gradually. But like I mentioned, if you were just, uh, straight without interest, on twenty-six million over twenty years is one, one point three million that we have to pay.
And I understand what, what, what we're trying to do here, but I don't think anybody here runs their household funds or their household budget like this either.
I understand.
And, and I, I just, I think it's, it's a incredible large amount of, of, uh, money that we're sitting here trying to request for a loan. And I still don't see us being proactive and, and I, I don't know why we have to go replace a full, uh, a full facilities building or a roof if, if it's not all damaged. I, I saw what they did in Memorial. I don't know why we need an architect if they're not redesigning or adding to the building, why we need a, a, an architect?
Well, and, and to answer your questions, uh, Coach Trevino. So part of it has to do with, and the first question meaning, uh, replacing the entire roof versus a certain section. If, if possible, we look at, uh, the sections of the, of the building. And we have to go to an expansion joint to make it ideal. Otherwise, we're looking at overlapping old roof with new roof. And if the, if the, uh, the old section that remains, uh, starts leaking, then we're running into leaks, possibly going into the new roof. Uh, so we would have to do that, but we look at the entire roof.
I understand that, Emmanuel, but, but I'm trying to visualize this roof right here. If we got water leaking here, it's not gonna travel onto the new roof that way. If you, if you replace, let's say this section, let's say this facility here was divided into three parts. And we only divide one part, or we only fix one, repair one, one section, the leak is gonna be repaired here. It's not gonna travel over to the next session and over to the next section. Because most of the roofs in your school systems are divided by section.
Correct. So that's what I mean by, when I say the expansion joint, we'll look at the expansion joints in each building. And so we would ideally replace the entire section up to the expansion joint. Otherwise, we have overlapping old roof with new roof if we don't go to the expansion joint where there's a break per se in construction. And, and so there's provisions for that expansion joint to, to be covered, and so that there's no leaks there. Uh, however, when, when we have the entire system and we look at the age of the roof, uh, if we know that the leaks already started and the age of the roof, uh, in its entirety is the same, then we know that the rest of the roof is not far behind. So deterioration is, is sure to follow immediately after we replace whatever section we replace. So we mark the entire roof for replacement once we know the age is the same for the entire roof. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why, why we do that. But in cases where we have campuses with different buildings, uh, or separate buildings, or standalone buildings, then we look at that building separately, not necessarily going back to the entire campus, because they're not, uh, they're not tied together. So we just go with that building and address that building. Uh, and, and in that way, we just take care of whatever the need is for the, for the campus. But when it's one whole continuous roof, one whole campus, then we do look at the age of that, of that area, of that system.
I, I had a question also, and it's also piggybacking off of trustee Trevino that, well, a question and a statement. I, I also don't, don't understand the six percent overall fee for the architect fee. I can understand, because these roofing companies that you're calling in are not mom and pop operations. I mean, they have built-in, uh, engineer, structural engineers, et cetera, specialists and whatnot. I just don't understand why we just couldn't hire an engineer as needed if something was, I mean, I understand that there's water damage and sometimes it's structural. And so, you know, like you said, panels need to be replaced, maybe supporting beams, whatever the case may be. But at that time, it would, seems to be cheaper to hire an engineer as needed versus paying an architect six percent overall on the total cost. It just, it just doesn't make sense to me how, why, why we just wouldn't move forward that way and just focus on engineers or structural engineers as needed to support the companies that we hire. Those companies, like I said, they already have built-in features. So that, that's one, that's my, my first question, and then I'll let you respond, and then I have a statement.
Yes, so, so, Mr. De Los Santos, in the case of roofing, the architect is the one that takes the lead for the design. And by law, anything over a hundred thousand dollars cost, we have to go with an architect to, to get that done. Uh, so, so there's no way around it as far as hiring an architect. Uh, now, there is a way.
Or repairs, though?
I'm sorry?
You, because you said design, but they're not designing anything.
Construction work.
Would be anything over a hundred thousand dollars of repairs or?
Any, anything, anything where the architect is required. In this case, for roofing, the architect is the one that's, that becomes the lead, uh, service provider for this, professional services. So design, we're talking about anything from, from seams, anything from materials that need to be insulation, thickness and calculations that way and so forth. That's where the architect comes in. Uh, so, so you have different layers on the roof and, and down to the roof there. And so, so all of that, uh, becomes part of the services of the architect. Um, anything that, that encompasses the, the roof itself. So, so that's where they come in and design and draft the, the drawings and so forth.
So anything over a hundred thousand must go to an architect?
Yes. So another method of doing this is to go directly to the, to the contractor or, or hire and do the design-built method, which is something that we don't typically recommend, only in certain special situations. Uh, but that's where you go directly to the contractor, and the contractor has its own architect. But by law, they still have to provide sealed stamped documents. So they would have to hire the architect regardless, it's, we're, we're caught, you know, with having to have professional services for the project.
What about a plan where we phase? We do different phases? Because I believe, um, like the amount, right, of twenty-six and a half million? May seem excessive, correct, as far as the maintenance tax note? But if we could create a, a phase, plant phase one, phase two, and as, as we see up here, we have a couple of elementaries that, that are high priority campuses, and we don't want to have any unsafe facilities for our staff and students, then create a phase one, phase two, and, and propose, you know, and maybe we can seek funding for that first phase, and then we start working in phase two, phase three, other projects into the budget accordingly as needed in your, the next year and the following year and thereafter. Because, um, that should have been happening, right?
Right.
During the course of, because we know the age of the buildings, we know the needs after we've assessed. So my, my recommendation is for staff to, to create a plan, a plan as far as phase, different phases of the projects that need, um, to be addressed.
You know, and that leads me to my statement, uh, and, and I agree with Dr. Valdez that from two thousand one to two thousand nine, eight, over the eight-year period, there was thirteen million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in tax liens, uh, in, in, in the loans taken. But from fourteen to twenty nineteen, taking into account the tax liens, the money that was taken out of the general fund, the reimbursement from the buses, I said, that's over forty million dollars. And at no time did anybody say twenty-two roof projects are a priority. And in addition to that, we're gonna spend millions in dollars out of the ESR funds on HVAC. And, and then I forgot what else is in even in ESR. I think there's, uh, some other additional projects in there, but that's just what I can't wrap my head around from, in a five-year span, we've spent over forty-something million dollars from twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen. But yet roofs never came up as, as a priority. Uh, and, and now there's twenty-two projects throughout the district that are, it's just the amount of money that we're laying on, on, on as debt for the taxpayers. It just kind of amazes me, you know, that, that much amount, that amount of money was spent. I mean, and on some stuff, just like the school board refinancing, things like that. I mean, it's just, roofs should have been number one and ECs. But like, what, what, what process, has that process changed from, from now? What's priority and what's not? I mean, are we revamping that? Kind of like, uh, Dr. Valdez was saying, as far as creating a system where we're gonna scale things. I know, uh, Mr. Riojas had presented something like that as well, too, but what happened between twenty fourteen and nineteen? That's why.
Mr. De Los Santos, uh, whenever we tried to do the, the last bond issue in two thousand sixteen, we had evaluated facilities and roofs specifically. And we had, uh, separated the roofs into phase one and phase two, was more important, or more pressing, and was, we can wait three, four, or five years. And we had them already, before the bond, we had them set aside like that. And, uh, we had done evaluations of the roofs back then. And we had done some calculations of what we needed, and estimates we had were very low. We thought it were minor repairs, not having to replace the roof. So whenever we went at it, uh, the bond didn't pass. We said, if we have the bond, we do more. We have the money for all of them. It didn't pass, so then we went to the maintenance tax note. So we went to, uh, the phase one roofs. And back then, we thought it was gonna be like two point three million dollars. So we put the projects in there, and the board approved them. And at the same time, the board approved the remainder of the seventy million dollars we got on the note, plus the money we got from the fund balance. We had a lot of projects, the facility, the clarity facilities, the, oh, you know, all the projects that we've done. So we allocated them, the board approved them, we have the architect, we went out to bid, anybody else. When the architects were looking at the roofs on those schools that we had, they determined, and we checked with staff, that the need we had was bigger. It was not just a minor repair that we thought, we needed to replace the entire roof, one of those being Airport Elementary. We thought the repair, repair was gonna be like a hundred thousand dollars. When they went to check, it's Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Garza, this school is almost thirty years old. And look at what you have here, what you have here, you need to replace the whole thing. And like Mr. Garza said, a part was, uh, damaged. The rest of the roof was probably gonna come out the same way, since the whole roof was almost thirty years old. We had, uh, that, that is why we did the whole thing. And our initial estimate, that is to answer the question why we didn't do more roofs. We were doing a lot of them. Uh, when we came up with that, some of the roofs didn't get done. We only did airport, the band, all band hall at West Echo High School, and the band hall, and the gym at Quayor Middle School and Big Arts Middle School. And we ran out of money with the two, two point three million. The remainder had been allocated to something else, so the other projects had to wait. And we got money from fund balance, which we've been doing, like we did for Memorial, Norbridge, and the Transition Center, we got the money from fund balance, or get a note. But we did try to get more, but, uh, we missed it with the estimate we had. We thought it would take only a couple of million to do it, but when we had the architect. We thought it would take only a couple of million to do it, but when we had the architect go evaluate the roofs, they determined that the need was higher. And we ended up needing, I believe, for that phase one, like thirty million dollars on phase one. And phase two included the high school.
Yeah, 'cause that note that you're talking about is, uh, in twenty seventeen, it's fifteen million, right? That's the one you're talking about right now?
Two thousand seventeen, fifteen million?
It was fifteen million plus what they took out of the general fund?
Yes, sir.
The unassigned funds?
Yeah, yeah. The loan was fifteen. But we received seventeen million in the transaction, so we got, they were sold at a premium, so we got seventeen million actually for that.
Right.
And we got about, I forgot, fifteen, sixty million from fund balance. And we had a lot of projects that the board approved. And we had, uh, a committee made from board members, administration, principals, even community members. We had several meetings, we went to them, we voted on them, and we presented to the board a ranking, and then the board ranked them themselves, and they got approved. And when we had the architect, the board approved the projects assigned to the architect that were being hired back in two thousand seventeen. And we started a roll balling with all the projects. That's why the money got tied up. On the other part, we did not do more roofs. That is why we didn't do more roofs at the time.
Right. And that's probably the process, that's why, I mean, I had mentioned that before. That process shouldn't come from the board. As far as ranking the priorities, that should come from maintenance department and, and the specialists that we have looking at things, because that was thirty million dollars that year. And I understand, like you said, those committees and, and then, and the board made the priorities, but that's just my personal opinion. I, I, I shouldn't be on those committees deciding what's priority and what's not, 'cause then you run into situations like this, where now you have twenty-two roof projects and millions and millions of AC projects that are pending. Well, thank you. That's, that's what I wanted to know.
Uh, before we go any further.
Yes, sir.
'Cause we're on, on, on the subject, and, and we know that for years and years and years, we've had issues with leaks, and we started to address those problems. Are the roofs that have been worked on a hundred percent free of leaks?
Yes.
So far, so far, yes, sir. We, we haven't heard anything out of airport or any other of those new roofs. The only one that, uh, that I can think of off the top of my head that's still under warranty and, and, uh, is being looked at right now is at Memorial. There's a leak that, uh, that had been reported, and they're looking at it. But, you know, with this, you know, large systems, um, there's, there's bound to be one or two, uh, leaks that, that should pop up, and we report them and, and get them addressed.
You know, for the investment that's being made, you know? We wanna get our monies worth.
Absolutely.
And not have to go back and wear one again, you know, 'cause, uh, I mean, there, there have been some campuses that every time it rains, you know, there.
Yes.
There are your, you know, buckets and trash cans and everything to collect water, and tile going down, and furniture getting wet, and, you know, so. We need to take those corrective measures and, you know, move forward with doing things right, and, and, and not to have these, these issues unless it's something that's just never gonna stop, so.
Yes, and unfortunately with roof leaks, it may be the same roof leak during one, you know, uh, storm that, uh, at another, during another storm, it seems like it's in another spot, because of so much that we have above the ceiling tiles, we have wiring, networking, and we have the, the ceiling joists and so forth. So those leaks come down, those, uh, uh, objects and items that we have up there start running down. And so that same leak could present itself as a different leak, but it's the same one from, from the, the occupant's point of view. As it starts running down the joist, it, sometimes it's hard to find the leak, because you have to follow where it came from, the, the, the trail of the, of the moisture and so forth.
I like the proposal that Dr. Valdez recommended, to go in, say, three phases instead of the twenty-seven million. That way, we'll prioritize the first phase, what schools, you know, especially the ones that thirty years, twenty-five years, and then continue from there.
Along with that same line, you know, we're talking about twenty-two roofs right now, but I'm sure, you know, as soon as we fix these twenty-two roofs, there's gonna be more roofs that need fixing. So, you know, great idea, with just, you know, considering that phase, phase plan.
Yes, sir.
Uh, because it's just gonna be an ongoing issue for future boards to come. So I know, you know, there's always constant work being done on these buildings and these roofs, so great job, and, and, you know, I'm, uh, hoping we can get back on track with that.
Yeah, we can put it on the annual schedule to, to get, uh, so many done every year and so forth.
My, my, uh, my final note is on the taxing. I know I had a lot of questions, and I know I wasn't here the, the last time when, when you all presented, but I was here before. I've, I've been here all the meetings, so you guys have been talking about it. But I support it if administration takes the lead and we don't deviate from the list of priority. You see, that, that's what we gotta make sure, that we don't have other committees where people have other input that, that shouldn't, and that this list gets done, you know, and we go out there, because if not, it falls on the backs of the taxpayers and just keeps mounting up. And in the end, it affects kids, 'cause it takes away money from instruction in the classroom. So I do support a tax lien, um, as long as we don't deviate from the list.
Yes, sir.
And, and administration takes the lead, you know, getting it done. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
My concern is, you know, for instance, in two thousand eighteen, when we had that maintenance, uh, tax note, and when we got the re, we got a reimbursement from the bus, from the insurance, right? And that fund, the, the, that, that money that we got back from the insurance did not go back to pay part, the, the part of the loan that we, we got. Why would we not use that money back to pay down that loan?
Sorry, sir. I was trying to, can you?
In two thousand eighteen.
Yes, sir.
Andres, when we got, when we received four million dollars, or whatever it was, for the fifty school buses after the flood.
Yeah, the money was from the insurance.
Yes. Why did that money not go back to the tax note or to pay down the loan? Why did we put that money in the general fund instead of using that money to bring down the balance?
Yeah, like, like I mentioned, at, at that time, we, we left them, we had the money, we did not pay it. You're correct. So we wanted to help, um, build up our fund balance, where we've been trying, we've been very low for a long time. Our balance for many, many years, we kept at our fifteen million.
I know, okay, you, we say that, but, but then in two thousand seventeen, we take sixteen million dollars out of the fund balance. So if it's been very low for all those years, how can we ever build it up if we're taking money from the, that amount of money from the fund balance?
No, I said, we had kept it for a long time, at fifteen million. Then we started growing it up. We started going up. Every year, we started adding half a million, a million, like that, and, and, uh, that's what we were able to, to do it. With the surpluses at the end of the year, when we were going and having higher ADA, higher tax collection, the extra money that we got, uh, in the end, went to fund balance. And when the last, well, four or five years, we started getting, uh, better results at the end of the year, and having better purchasing, I like to say now, getting, uh, but getting our quotes, lower prices in a, a lot of items. And different things throughout the year, we had money, we added it, that's why we're able to take money from fund balance. Now that we were at fifteen, we, we had it higher. And we were able to take money from fund balance, plus the note, to do the, the items we needed.
Are there on, are there any other questions? The presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
We now have, uh, item four, public comments on proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget and tax rate.
No one is connected from outside? Yeah, there's no one connected from outside, and there's nobody signed up for public comments.
Oh, yes, sir. We have none? Item five, adjournment.
Tell them.
Time now is six thirty, and this meeting is adjourned.